We're seeing other Gary laugh. I'll get Steve for the painting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, true.
Yeah.
Very true.
Yeah.
I was.
I wonder what happened to my neighbor.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
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 I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't either.
Yeah.
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 It's me.
Yeah.
Like me to be like.
Yeah.
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 I bet he, I bet he's hearing.
Yeah.
Usually is very good about calling me or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There he is.
There he is right there.
You're not even late, Ed. He's here for fifteen seconds.
He hasn't waited for me.
Hi, Ed.
I'm what?
Brian didn't.
How you doing?
Good.
Good, good, good.
You?
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to North Platte City Council Meeting here on Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, beginning at five thirty, of course. Calling the meeting to order, we have an invocation by Chaplain Brenda Lee, who apparently is not here tonight. Mr. Rieker, would you grace us with a little bit of invocation, please?
Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the wonderful rain that you gave us last night. A good reminder of your infinite love and mercy which you shower on us every day, even though oftentimes our eyes are not open to it. Lord, I ask you to give us your wisdom, your humility, and your charity as we deliberate deliberate tonight on what's before us in the city council. I pray, Lord, that you'll give us a wisdom to make decisions based on what is true and just. We ask all this in the name of Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag, the state of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Rieker. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Flanders.
Here.
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 Thank you. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the State of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure: The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and address, and please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints, excuse me, or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. See, my allergies are working quite well all of a sudden tonight. Consent agenda: All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may, however, remove an item from consent by request. Number one, A, approve the minutes of May seven, two thousand and twenty four. B, approve the application by Bodunk's Brewing DBA Peg Leg Brewing for a special designated license on June eighth, two thousand and twenty four, from ten AM to ten thirty PM at Peg Leg Brewery, twenty five nineteen Halligan Drive for a PTSD fundraiser. C, approve the application by Platt Bar Inc. for special designated licenses on June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty four, and June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four, from eight AM to one AM at Platt Bar, one one nine West Sixth Street for a beer garden. Item D, approve the applications by Pals Brewing Company LLC for special designated licenses on nine consecutive Thursdays from June sixth, two thousand and twenty four, to August eighth, two thousand and twenty four, from four PM to ten PM at Fort Cody Trading Post, two two one Halligan Drive, for a music series.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Nisley. Calling the question in the consent agenda, please. Consent agenda is passed. Thank you. Item number two is pulled from the agenda, or further research. Item number three, approve the recommendation of the Quality Growth Committee to approve a request for North Platte Area Chamber and Development for thirty thousand dollars to conduct a comprehensive blight slash extreme blight study by a professional consultant to identify areas of North Platte that are eligible for the designation.
I move to approve the recommendation of the Quality Growth Committee to approve a request for North Platte Area Chamber and Development for thirty thousand dollars to conduct a comprehensive blight, extreme blight study by a professional consultant to identify areas of North Platte that are eligible for the designation as presented in the materials.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Vols. Discussion on item number three. Seeing none. Oh, sorry, Pete, go ahead.
I just want to make one comment on this. I think this is an outstanding use of quality growth fund money. This enables the entire city to utilize this funding, and it identifies areas to which we can really concentrate on housing. So I think as far as quality growth funds go, this is an outstanding use of that money. So that's all I have.
Okay, Ed?
Mr. Mayor, if I'm understanding this map correctly, what's shaded in orange is believed to be, meet the qualifying standards for extreme blight. I haven't done the math, but just judging from this drawing here, this this drawing, it would appear that the belief is that roughly maybe as much as sixty percent of our community qualifies for that?
I, I believe by the legal definition of the age of the structures, that is probably accurate. Judy, Gary, do you have anything to add?
Gary Pearson, President, North Platte Area Chamber and Development Corporation, five oh two South Dewey, Mayor Council. The areas that are defined were actually when the city did your first extreme blight study. Those were identified by the US Census Bureau as areas that are likely to qualify by the age of the structures. Obviously, by doing a comprehensive plan, you know, what, what I've observed in the last several months as North Platte's kind of become the leader with the microtiff projects is a frustration that developers have and the extra burden it puts on city staff when you have to do these, each of these individual really small blight studies. And for instance, on Els Lodge, which I think is a really good project, it took six months to get through the process. This would give you a comprehensive review by a third-party professional, and then it's for the city to do what it wants. You could incorporate it into your comprehensive plan, which is coming forward this year. I think it's a good planning tool. But each individual project that would ever come forward would still have to stand on its own merits, still have to go through the approval process. You're just helping springboard the situation where you're not frustrating developers so bad that they, they won't invest in these older areas of the community. And the whole thing is about infusion, infusion capital into an area of North Platte that hasn't had a lot of new investment in it for, for decades. And with the demand that we have for housing, the workforce that we know is coming, there's never been a better time. And so it's just a good planning tool. It's not an unusual thing for cities to do this on a comprehensive level. I think it was probably done back in the nineteen nineties because we have a map now that shows predetermined areas that were predetermined in previous time, but was never brought forward for final blight. But at least the research part of it is done. The two large census tracts that are included there were also defined by the US Census Bureau as being eligible tracts for opportunities. And one of those was adopted. We were only allowed as a community to recommend one area when Governor Rickens was in, when this program was first came about to exceed, to receive that designation, which again invites an infusion of new development into, into the community. So you know, what we've been, the Chamber Development Corporation's been a big advocate for housing. You've heard us here many, many times. We identify this as a really critical need about a decade ago, and we've been a real advocate behind the scenes and working with developers to try and convince them to, to come forward to North Platte. I believe you've had seventeen microtiff projects now, thirteen of which have been approved. The four that, that weren't were in not blight designated areas. They, if you had a plan like this, they certainly would have been, but the developers simply couldn't waste that amount of time to go through it, or the frustration of going through it. So this just kind of handles it all in one big comprehensive look of what's going on in the community and identify those areas that we can invite new investment into those neighborhoods.
Go ahead, Ed.
Well, Gary, you mentioned that four, four didn't wait to do the study. Were those four completed?
I have no idea. You know, I know they applied. Judy could answer, better answer that.
Thank you, Gary.
Mayor, Council, if you're asking me if they went ahead with their project, I couldn't tell you that.
Okay.
They just put in their application. I reviewed it. Either sent them a letter or talked to them in person that they were not eligible, did not qualify. And so that's why you never saw those.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all.
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna ask for one of them to come back up here. I want to make sure I understand the, the connection with extreme blight and microtiff. So the study's gonna focus on both extreme, extreme blight and blight, but microtiffs is a fifteen-year limited program. Is that correct? I guess I'm just trying to make sure, and, but I know extreme blight also doesn't sit necessarily within your thirty-five percent cap, right?
Right, that's why we're looking at doing both a, a blight and an extreme blight because you want to make sure that we never get to that thirty-five percent. So if someone came in and that area qualified for blight and substandard and for extreme blight, we would probably go ahead and do both. Do a blight and an extreme blight. That way it doesn't count in that thirty-five percent. So extreme blight really doesn't have anything to do with microtiff. So I mean, we could blight that, you know, blight larger areas, but then that counts into your blight percentage. So we want to make sure that we have that ability to at least designate some of it as extreme blight, which pulls that back out.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Calling the question on item number three. Item number three is passed. Item number four, approve the selection of Paul Reed Construction for earthwork in the industrial wastewater treatment plant in the amount of three million twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and thirty-six cents, and authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute contracts.
I move to approve the selection of Paul Reed Construction for earthwork for the industrial wastewater treatment plant and authorize the mayor to negotiate and execute the contracts. Second.
Motion by Vols, second by Flanders. Brent, you want to come up here and talk a little bit about what's going on, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. What you have before you is a continuation of the project that's been worked on for a while. As you remember, in July, August, we worked on getting a construction manager at Risk on board to help with the construction of the industrial wastewater facility. All the way back, the state of Nebraska received ARPA funds, which they chose where and how those ARPA funds were distributed. And one of them was for wastewater projects, which was identified for the wastewater plant that we're working on here. So this is ARPA money through the state that the city had to receive, not sustainable beef. So with the C Mar project and some of the changes to expedite things, we're bidding some of these packages separate so that we can have things in motion like the dirt work while we're working on some of the other design components. The engineers working on other design components. So on this bid, we had three bidders, and the low bid is who you have before you. The other two were three point nine million. And a key component of this was schedule that this needed to be done by September. And the low bidder, Paul Reed, said that they anticipated being here within a month, and they didn't have any issues with being completed on time. We got three bids from three very qualified firms that I would have been okay with any of the construction companies. And so we're recommending going with the low bid.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Brent while he's standing here?
Mr. Mayor.
Ed?
Brent, I noticed here says the drawings were dated the tenth of May. Is that, did we have some delays or problems getting them done or?
That was the most recent update to the drawings for the dirt work package, so.
And was, was, was there a delay in getting it bid? That's my question, I guess.
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Quick bid, but it was not delayed.
I thought it was quick.
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, calling the question on item number four, please.
Mark.
Mr. Woods, I think your battery must not be working there. There we go. Item number four is passed. Item number five, adopt a resolution to approve a microtiff project for Stephen and Carol Ray for rehabilitation of an existing residential and accessory structure Adopt a resolution to approve a micro TIF project for Stephen and Carol Ray for rehabilitation of an existing residential and accessory structure and site improvements located at three zero three West Reed Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to adopt a resolution to approve a micro TIF project for Stephen and Carol Ray for rehabilitation of an existing residential and accessory structure and site improvements located at three oh three West Reed Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Lucas, second by Garrick. Discussion? Judy, you want to fill us in a little bit? I know how you like to do this, so.
You should have most of the information in front of you. This is a pretty simple project. It's a single family residential. And what they're looking at doing is improving windows siding, doing some site work as far as some new concrete, just upgrading their property. And so they decided that they wanted to try this program out and see how it worked for them. Any questions?
Any questions? Thanks, Judy. Any other discussion points on this one? Seeing none, calling the question on I have number five, please. I have number five is passed. I have number six. First reading in action on ordinance number four one six four to add sections one one zero dot two zero through one one zero dot three four to title eleven Business Regulations, Chapter one ten General Provisions to the code of the City of North Platte relating to retail business occupation tax.
Yeah, I just request to remove myself from this item due to the potential of a conflict of interest.
Okay, let the record show Mr. Lucas is not involved in I have number six. Go ahead.
Ordinance number four one six four, in ordinance of the City of North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, to amend the code of the City of North Platte by adding sections one one zero point two zero through one one zero point three four to title eleven Business Regulations, Chapter one ten General Provisions. To provide that this ordinance shall be made a part of the code of the City of North Platte, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Thank you.
I move to adopt ordinance number four one six four to add sections one one zero point two zero through one one zero point three four to title eleven Business Regulations, Chapter one ten General Provisions to the code of the City of North Platte relating to retail business occupation tax.
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by Flanders. So this is quite a complex scenario. So Bill, you kind of crafted this. These changes, you want to talk through kind of what we're trying to accomplish here, please?
Yeah, I can provide my perspective on my role in proposing these changes here. And that's kind of twofold. And so the two different, I guess, goals that I was trying to accomplish here. Number one, this is an existing ordinance. It falls within the city code in section one ten point zero three, and it's kind of buried within that code section. If you were to pull one ten point zero three up on the city's website and look through that, it's quite lengthy and you have to know exactly kind of where you're looking to be able to find this. So my first goal was to try to make this a little bit more user friendly and to put this within some separate code sections. So it's a little bit easier for the public at large to be able to access and reference. And so that's the first goal. And the second goal was to go through and clean it up and to allow for some more, I guess, to broaden the scope of it a little bit. There has been a request to, it's not before us now, but but to look at an amendment to the the contract between the city, the CRA and the mall. And the existing ordinance does not allow for anything like that. So any kind of an amendment is a separate item. It's not before the council today. All we're looking at right now is the revision to the ordinance itself to allow for the possibility of any kind of an amendment. And so I, in the council materials, what you'll see in front of you are just some of those broadening measures where it references not only the Enhanced Employment Area Redevelopment Contract, but we're proposing to add in any amendments there too. And also in respect to the, find it here in the council materials. In reference to the bond, there's a reference to the Enhanced Employment Area Occupation Tax Revenue Bond. So an amendment is being proposed to allow for any subsequently issued bonds as well. And so goal number one, make it, make this a little bit more user friendly. Goal number two is meant to kind of broaden the scope of the ordinance and the the provisions for the EEA.
Thank you. As a general rule, when we come across a ordinance that isn't maybe very easy to read, we try to clean it up a little bit in the process of changing it. So that's, I appreciate the city attorney's effort to do so. Okay. Anyone have any questions? Oh, yes, we do have District one seventy seven representatives here. So we'll, we'll get to you in a minute here. Okay? Go ahead, Donna.
I just wanted to thank our attorney for trying to clean it up. However, it seems like all these taxes have kind of turned into a cancer for our community, like nobody can do anything without this. And I'm from the old school. So appreciate your work.
Guys, you want to try and fill us in on what your goal is, please?
Good evening, Mayor Councilmember Andrew Willis. On behalf of North Platte LLC, owner of the mall. So the ultimate goal, again, this ordinance would allow for the mall LLC to go to the CRA and amend the contract to increase the amount of the EEA, Enhance Employment Area, the EEA bond. So you know, right off the bat, this, the EEA, the Enhanced Employment Area has been approved. The ordinance allows for 20 years of the Enhanced Employment Area Occupation Tax on the mall area. So what the, what would not happen, there would be no increase in time, there would no increase in, in occupation tax, there'd be no increase in area. So it would still be the mall for that same period of time for the same occupation tax. What's happened is, as the malls came in line and everything's gone well, is that it, we, there's, well, two things. One is there's more potential revenue occupation tax that would come in, partially from finishing out the north and east half of the mall, which we'll talk about one of the purposes of this. And then, and then the other part is there's additional area there that needs to, that can be developed out. There's some crucial pieces that would, would, that we, that area could be used for. Unfortunately with that, that's additional financing, that's additional cost. And so the increase in the EEA bond amount will allow for those improvements. And again, specifically what we're talking about is the, the, the finishing, the build out of the north, the rest of the mall, the actual mall space. Right now, it's, it's, what happened with the, with the, with the part that's going well is we had, had those improvements. Used, used the financing, got it, got the facade going, got the rehab going, the parking lot, all, all improved. And that's when the tenants come in. So the tenants who are looking at that additional space right now are really waiting on the additional improvements. The second piece, the crucial piece is the, there's, I think it's on the southeast side, there's the, it's just grass right now, the lots. There's no utilities, there's nothing that can be done, but they are lots. So the goal would be to build out another mixed use building, very similar to what, what's been built out there. Sixty-one units above about 4,000 square feet of retail. But again, that lot right now is, isn't just grass. So it needs utilities ran, needs a lot of site prep, it needs all the stuff that needs to be done in order to make that a buildable lot. And, and that's really the, where the, where the additional Enhanced Employment Area Revenue will be used for. That's very crucial. Without, without EEA, without this additional funding, nothing's going to happen there. But the, the current building there, the Heartland Flats is hundred, 100% full with a waiting list. There's a need for the additional units. There's a real, there's a real push to get that constructed now and online next year. When sustainable beef comes in, there's additional units available for employees. So that's the push as far as timing goes. If this isn't done, could this be done sometime in the future? Well, probably not. Again, there's no utilities, there's nothing on this site. But it certainly can't be done anytime soon. And so there really is, it's, it really is crucial from just financing additional, additional work that's being done there. But it's again, from a timing perspective as well. And so that's, again, broadly speaking, what the ultimate ask is going to be of the CRA is to increase the Enhanced Employment Area Revenue Bond Amount. Again, that does not change the timeframe for that, of the, the ordinance allows to, the collection of the revenue, the occupation tax. It doesn't change the area, it would still be just the mall. It doesn't change the percentage. It would just be to allow more collection as, as more revenue comes in. And again, that, it really, it serves the crucial purpose of this additional work that has not happened and probably will not happen. I mean, it certainly will not happen in the foreseeable future without additional financing. So that's really, broadly speaking, the goal and what needs to be done. This ordinance that the council is looking at right now is, as Attorney Trusinski mentioned, it, I mean, that sets up and allows for the, the requested amendment to the redevelopment contract.
Okay, thank you. We reserve the right to call you back up here.
I do have a question.
Okay, I think Mark had his hand up first, so hold on, Donna. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, you can call me stupid, but I don't get any of that. I mean, if, is this new building, the new apartments are going to be built. Isn't that area already in the EEA zone?
Correct, it is. And so the, the EEA is, it's, the EEA is revenue, it's a, it's an occupation tax off of all the retail sales in that area. So, you know, this is not an increase in TIF where they were talking about new buildings, this is just retail sales. So bringing in new retail will increase the EEA amount. So again, that's, that's the additional occupation tax paid by consumers on space. So, so yes, it's in the area, but it's, there's nothing built there and nothing will be built without additional financing.
Well, the apartments wouldn't bring, well.
There's, there's retail underneath, correct. So the, so the retail, additional retail would be that, that 4,000 square feet on, on the first floor of the, the new mixed use building and the additional north and east parts of the mall.
Okay, I must be missing something because when those are online, you're going to collect that money. You're not going to collect it until we're making retail sales. I thought that the, maybe I'm remembering wrong, but I thought that there was a certain amount specified in that ordinance. And that when you had collected all that, it was done.
Well, there's a certain amount specified in the EEA bond currently. So that, the, the bond amount is set. And that, and again, that's going to be the request to the CRA is to increase that amount.
So you are saying you do want more money?
Yes.
You want to increase the bond?
Correct, yes, absolutely.
Okay, I just.
Sorry if I wasn't clear, sorry if I wasn't clear about that. Yes, that, that is the, that is there going to be the request for the CRA is to increase the amount of the, the EEA bond.
Why?
To additional, it allows for additional financing to do these additional improvements. You know, it's a 50 plus million dollar project and it's, it's.
Thank you. I, I understand now.
Just for the sake of clarity, since we're talking about the amount of what amount addition is being additional would be requested?
Three point three million. And again, that is, since it's the occupation tax, it's, it's all, it's, it's occupation tax on top of retail sales. So it's all driven by additional retail sales, not, it's not TIF or anything like that.
Donna, you got a question?
And I don't know if you would know this, but what is the, the percent of rented apartments in the 96 that we already have over there?
It's 100% full.
It's 100%?
Yeah, with a waiting list. So it's, it's fully leased out.
How many apartments do you want to put in this?
Sixty-one more.
Sixty-one, okay. And how many retail slots do you have?
Would be 4,000 square feet. So I guess it depends on how that's split up and.
Well, I'll tell you what I've been hearing. I hope the retail shops in there make it. Okay, I hope they're giving you good reports that they're having good sales. Okay? Okay, I hope so. That's because people are, they're doing other things, but anyway.
Well, I think so far it seems like it's, I mean, there, I guess I would say it seems like it's going.
I don't think they've stopped shopping online. Sorry to say.
Well, if you want retail stores, this is.
I know. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a quick question for you, just, just to clarify for everybody. We're not changing the 20 years.
Correct.
We're not changing the 1.95%, which I believe is what the EEA.
Correct, that's what it is right now, correct.
So basically what we're doing is going from 7.5 million up to like 11.8 million, somewhere in that ballpark, if I add correctly. So the onus is on the mall to collect that. So at the end of 20 years, if you've only collected $10 million, your corporation, your corporation is on the hook for the extra 1.8 million dollars. So it does nothing, we're not changing anything. We're just giving you the ability to collect more money so that, on the bond side, so that you can continue to finish the east side of the mall property, to build the highly desirable apartments with some more retail space. I'm just painting the picture on that.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely correct. The, the ordinance as it stands right now allows for the collection of a 1.95% occupation tax for 20 years. That does not change. The maximum amount would change. That's what would increase by 3.3 million dollars. So you're right, if right now, if, if everything's approved and only 7.5 million dollars of EEA revenue comes back in in that 20 years, then it's, then this was all for naught. But the, the play here is that to, to bring in more retail, to increase those, to increase that revenue and to utilize that. And that's how, what we're utilizing to, to finance these additional improvements. But, but you're right, it's, it still is going to be 20 years, a maximum, from the beginning, maximum timeframe, same 1.95% on all the retail.
Thank you. And I have some commentary on this. Unless there are more questions.
Anybody have an immediate question?
I have one real quick one from Mr. Willis. What's, what's the expected cost for building that, those apartments and what you're going to do? Do you have a rough estimate?
I, I don't, but I can go ask him. There's, but there is, I mean, what I can say is out of the work, there's about, there's more, there was more than four, four and a half, I think it was roughly between four and four and a half of easily identifiable eligible uses that have not been done now and will be done. So again, this 3.3 million is a piece of the, and that's just the eligible costs for like the site work and all the, that prep work. That's not the actual construction of the apartments.
Ed?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. So you're looking at adding additional retail space. Approximately how much of the mall, the old mall building right now is not rented?
Cannot, yeah, I mean, I'm not sure the exact answer to that. I can.
You can phone a friend back there if you'd like.
Or I can check and then come back up.
Just go ahead and join him up here, that'll be easy.
Justin Hernandez, on behalf of Rev Development. On the question regarding how much is available in the mall itself. And the mall, as it used to be, had the center hallway through there, and that's where a lot of the stores were at. Since then, we're, we've taken the approach of getting that outside retail access. So that is how the new retail is requesting to connect with the public. They've been a lot more successful that way. So there's another 33,000 square foot box right now. That would be just to the south of where Five Below opened up, that would be available. There's a 14,000 square foot box that has an entrance off of the east side. Kind of, I think that's where the Herberters used to be at. And that would be available, that needs improvements on that east side. And then there's an approximate 40,000 square feet, the large area in the middle section of the mall where JCPenney's used to be, that entrance is off of the east side. There's two tenants that we're in discussions with right now. We've done some potential renderings with them for about 25 to 35,000 square feet of that. But we're really finding it's more of the big box that wants to go into those older buildings. The retail that was discussed for the new building on the southeast corner of the property, that's more of the smaller bay retail, and that's where you've seen that be a lot more effective, reduces the footprint. They can sell online, they can also sell in the store, but they don't have as much square footage. So really not trying to cannibalize between the two. And there's been a significant, significant demand for that 2,000 square foot space. As you can see, everything filled up pretty quick there already. The front building's got another tenant that's looking at the middle section right now. And we have one potential pro drive-through already on this future building. So a lot of, lot of action there. Pad sites also were already committed to a, a tenant that will be, or a new development that'll be announced soon if it's already not out. But it'll be a new, new restaurant coming to North Platte. So a lot of great things have been done with the investment that the community has made along with the development team, so.
So Justin, just since we probably don't all know the square footage of the old mall in our heads. In answer to Mr. Rieker's question, is it roughly half full, two thirds full? What would you say?
Right now, I, it is a, it's approximately 60% leased with the entrances all the way around the building. It's, it's at 80% leased with the entrances that face the west side from the investment that's been done there to the west. I can tell you that TJ Maxx and Five Below would not be here without that significant investment that was made through that EEA. And they put every single dollar of that plus more into that facade. And you know, it's a, it's a beautiful looking mall. Had a lot of compliments and, you know, other cities that have asked us to, to take a look at theirs after they've seen what this was and where it is now.
Well, I want to, I want to thank you. It does look nice. Appreciate it.
We appreciate the support on the EEA because that's what, that's what got that done on this west side. And without that, it wouldn't have been there.
So going forward then, are, do you anticipate the, the remainder of the mall then will be opened up from the east side?
The stores will be accessible from the east side of the building?
There's one more bay that is just south of the Five Below location. So as you're looking at it to be to the right of Five Below, that would be the only remaining bay that would open up currently to the west. The other bays are programmed to open up from the east. There's some, some emergency exits and some corridors that are going to be in there. But we wanted to do that to help balance out the traffic. So we don't have a lot of parking, you know, concerns pushed all the way to the west. So we really get to utilize the entire property, which is a change from what it used to be. And is also something that we've been coordinating with the Bomb Guards folks to help kind of that cottonwood development. You know, see some more energy there with some east entrances off of our building.
So it's your business. I'm not going to tell you how to run it. I wouldn't begin to know how to run it, quite frankly. But, but if the smaller stores are so attractive to businesses to come into, why aren't you dividing the remainder of the building into smaller parcels instead of spending another, I don't remember what the cost of the, of the apartments was going to be, but in addition, why, why not just break those other, some of those other square footages into smaller units and sell them that way?
That's a great question. And we, we looked at that extensively with the design team. We put a lot of different options out there for it. The challenge that we have is the depth of that existing structure and the width. The ideal space for a retailer is about 40 to 60 feet deep. You get any deeper than that, they have to get into different action requirements. And then in that width scenario, you know, you really don't want to have to program them into a space that's too wide where they get about 100 foot. So we, we looked at it. We'd love to be able to do that. We even had some, you know, options that we thought would work, but it was more cost prohibitive to do that than try to work with these larger tenants. That, how that TJ Maxx is there, you know, kind of anchoring the development. Some of these other tenants are more interested in, in taking a harder look now.
Thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
Other questions while we have Brad?
So since we phoned a friend, Justin, what, what's your rough cost, you think, for the apartment and everything that you're looking at doing?
You only need to use one of those. But now the, that southeast building, we're calling mixed use phase two, has 61 units and approximately 4,000 square feet of retail space. Building cost and site is right in that $14 million range, all in for project costs there. And then you know, there's significant costs that could be associated with that east side of the mall and kind of depending on where these tenants are at. So that's where, you know, we've sized the CEA based on the retail sales that are projected. And the other part that I would add, kind of where Andrew was at for is that since we originally asked you for this in 21, we all know where inflation's at, and we all know where the economy's been at. So inherently, those sales have increased just by the cost of the goods. So that's another part of that.
Donna?
I have another question, but it might be for Dawn Miller.
Oh, okay.
It has to do with the bottom of page 69.
Okay, don't go far, guys. Dawn, if you don't mind?
Thank you. I just want to know the process and the retail collects this money and they pay it to?
Yes.
Who?
They come, it comes to the city.
To the city, okay.
On a monthly basis.
Okay. And how do you know if that is the correct amount that they're paying?
We, we do pay it based upon the reported sales by the retailers.
So are you, does the Department of Revenue let you know what the reporting of sales?
We do not receive that. It's, it's part of the ordinance that they are to remit that. So at this point, we really don't have a validation. So we do rely on the numbers provided by the retailers.
That's a big concern for me because in my prior employment, sales tax was a big thing to have to chase down and collect for merchants. And where you don't even know for sure what they're paying, what their sales are. I don't, I don't know how that.
We, we absolutely, you know, we track the payments by each of the retailers. But the retail sales that they're reporting is self-reported.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't remember who's next. Pete?
I just have some quick commentary on this. I have been to everybody's opening day at the mall properties. And I have never seen such excitement as I've seen for North Platte to get more retail. This is a no risk opportunity for the city. Okay? All the risk is on the developer. We are not increasing a tax. We're not increasing the timeframe in which they can collect the tax. The only thing we're doing is giving them an avenue to utilize more tax that they created in order to put back into our town, our city. If we don't allow this, years down the road, the mall's going to be half done. And they're going to be like. And they're gonna be like, what's going on with the backend of the mall? There's a good chance that that could happen. I want to see this project come to fruition. I want more retailers in there so that we can continue to draw. People from other communities to come shop here. I was at TJ Maxx on Sunday. And I didn't even get there for the eight o'clock. I had to go to church. But afterwards, I went in with my wife just to go in there, and the line was cleared at the back of the store. You know, obviously, that's opening day, but. People were so happy to be able to buy underwear, socks, whatever it is you have at TJ Maxx. North Platte hasn't had that ability for ten years. My wife, we don't even wanna go there. She's so happy with this, this deal. As I'm sure most of the other wives are, and probably a lot of husbands, but I wanna commend you guys. The place looks great. Uh, we need to bring this to completion, and this is the avenue with no risk to the city to be able to bring this. Project to completion, and Lord knows we need some more housing, that apartment, so. Thank you, guys. That's my commentary on this, and I think it's a great deal. Thank you.
Brad, did you have something else?
I do. Uh, I have a, just a process question. Bill, maybe you can help me out. So we're out to read, three readings of this uh ordinance. And then it goes to the CRA for them to uh negotiate the contract. Then does it come back to us for final approval, correct?
Yes, um, yep. So there's the readings on the ordinance itself. And then the, the CRA redevelopment contract is actually a three-party contract. Uh, and so the existing redevelopment contract is between the CRA, the city, and the developer. And any amendment would, would be similarly crafted where it would be between the city, the CRA, and the developers, so. Any amendment to the redevelopment plan would also come back before city council.
So any amendment moving forward, not just this one, but any would come back to us.
Absolutely.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I have a couple of questions, cause I don't know too much about the retail development business. So whichever one of you wants to field this question, feel free to stand up. It's probably a Justin question, but I was gonna guess. Okay, so let's say you have a, a, a big box store that wants to come in here. I'm not gonna mention a name, cause I don't wanna start any rumors. Let's just call it Vendor X, okay? Now, if being, having started a couple of small businesses, I know that when I started the small business, I went out, I rented some, rented someplace, and it was up to me to. Redo the inside of that to whatever degree of, of niceness I wanted, and I paid for all that. The guy who owns the building did not pay for it. So how does it work in the big box store business? If, if you entice a big box store to come in, who pays for the renovations?
Well, there was a. Pre-COVID and post-COVID.
Right.
Pre-COVID, uh, it was, the big box was more excited to get an opportunity to get in there. Cause that was the way that they could reach the guests or reach the customers in those markets, and. You know, they were more willing to uh participate in that. Uh, post-COVID, you really have to entice them in. Um, you've gotta get that shell of the building um completed. And you know, that's anything inside of the exterior walls, so all the HVAC, that electrical, their entrance. Um, the roof, and everything has to be done, ready to go for them. And they will then look at that interior portion of it, and you work out. Um, sometimes them, that tenant participates in a portion of that. Um, sometimes there's a reduced rate in the rent uh for them to participate in it. Or the developer has to then front that money, um, and then the tenant pays it back over time. So there's a lot of different avenues that go into it. It's definitely not as clean as what it used to be. Um, because there's more of a, a, a pull to try to bring the tenants into the, into the community, into the space. So if the tenant wants to be there, um, they're happy to put their more, you know, their money into it and go after it, but it just hasn't really been that environment. Um, you know, that we've seen since, since COVID.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have a question? If not, I'll keep going. Feel free to ask in front of me, it's fine. Okay. So let, I just like to keep things simple as we can. This is a very complex project. I don't wanna understate that, but. Quite simply, if I were to just ask you the question, if this council and eventually the CRA agrees to increase the EEA as, as you're going to ask. What does the community gain?
Uh, the community would gain a similar um result as what um is before you right now in the west side of the mall. Uh, you know, without that, we had a lot of trouble even attracting tenants. We weren't sure if we were gonna be able to show those renderings and. You know, show what we could do to the exterior of the building, so. Um, that's what you would gain on the mall side, on the, on the, on the east, is active tenant storefronts, uh, the tool to go negotiate with them. To help cover that gap in what the market rent is um versus the cost to get that improvement in there and bring the tenant. The other part that you gain, which I, I think, um, you know, we were pleasantly surprised with, and all of you knew it, um, was more housing. Um, you know, that has been amazing to see. Um, you know, that housing that we have out there fill up as fast as it did. And, you know, waiting list for tenants uh to get in there, and we're getting calls on. You know, can I put my name in for next summer? You know, they're wanting to make sure that they can get into that building. We're really seeing an active environment there that's creating a, a district, and that was the goal. So adding more people actively living there, going there every day, shopping at that retail, I mean, that's a healthy district. Leads to a healthy city, leads to more tax dollars, um, obviously to reinvest in the city. So um, I, I think that's really the big gain is sixty-one more um housing units, which we've already proven that uh we can deliver on. And that the community needs, and it's a desirable area that, you know, is right, right as you come in uh to North Platte, so.
Okay, and if we opt not to increase the EEA, what is likely to happen to the development?
Um, it's likely that that housing really becomes a, a struggle for that retail portion to take off over there due to the site work cost. Um, the returns become very uh, very stressed uh to make it worthwhile in the current uh financing and interest rate environment. So um, as Andrew said, it would. It would lead to probably waiting um longer to make that happen, and then same thing on the east side of the mall. Um, we are at a time right now that we do have, we do have tenants that are looking at that. Uh, you can see just by, you know, the long experience right now, TJ Maxx had a great opening. Five Below was, you know, ecstatic with their opening, um, and for the remaining, you know, four or five weeks after that. From our update that we got on just how well received they were in the community, so. We really wanna capitalize on that now, and we have brokers that are in um Las Vegas right now at the uh convention. For all the retailers that are actively marketing this, and, you know, while we can. Show that, you know, there's a lot of energy here. That's where we'd like to take this and uh, you know. Show those retailers their commitment from the city to also move forward and, and support them coming here, and this is why they should do it.
Thank you. Anyone else have any quote? Donna, go ahead.
I just wanna say one thing. I do wanna uh commend your company for getting those apartments up and. Cause we've approved other projects and they don't seem to be moving nearly as fast as yours did.
Well, I, it, I, thank you, and it was a lot of work, a lot of, you know, a lot of long hours by everybody, including uh, you know. A lot of subcontractors that helped with that too, and uh, you know, tough time in the industry, but uh. You know, we're excited to see everybody living there, and, you know, it's, it's really awesome to see that district taking, taking shape now, so.
Thank you.
Ed? Days gone by. People sold their goods. Based on a, a profit margin, and out of that profit margin, they paid their bills. They had to pay for the building costs. They had to pay for the. For the gas to heat it, the electricity to keep the lights on. And that was all built into the profit margin. We have other businesses in town that are building facilities. That. Appear to be paying their bills just with the profit margin. I don't know how their costs compare to yours. Why is your business different that you have to have an additional subsidy from the community? It is costing the community money. When, when, and I understand that in, in, in days gone by, that would have been built into your profit margin. If you had a ten percent margin, you would normally, and you needed extra funds, you would have raised it to twelve percent to cover your cost. And as you said. This is a successful startup, and I'm glad it is. With the momentum that you have going right now, it would seem that you should be able to build on that momentum. And I don't know what you're renting your apartments for, but. Rent's going pretty good right now. I have no idea how that figures into recovering your cost. Um, I'm just wondering. Why your circumstances are different than other businesses in town?
Appreciate that perspective, uh, and I think you've mentioned it, and Dawn has mentioned it too, and. On the business climate, especially in the retail side, uh, which that's where this is generated from, um, this EEA that we're discussing. You know, in days gone by, there wasn't the internet, and, and days gone by, there wasn't the online retail competition that's out there. And that's where a lot of that uh, you know, does exist. You know, we are doing every effort we can to help attract those retailers, to bring them in. And deliver what appears to be a community, uh, you know, what the community desires uh by. Them showing that they're shopping there, and these retailers doing their own homework and wanting to be part of this community, but. You know, they do have the option, just sell online and, you know, reach you by, by just shipping it to your house. Uh, but I think by having the retailers there and now delivering more of a dynamic district. That includes the apartments that benefit uh from that retail being there on that first floor. You know, now, now you've got a longer term um investment into the community that's gonna help sustain that. You know, much more than that internet presence would if you're just shopping there, so I think that. Uh, difference may be the type of retailers. Um, we don't, we don't own those businesses. Uh, you know, we're trying to provide a, a spot where those businesses can come and fill a need that's the community wants, so.
Add one thing to that. I mean, I would just say. You know, specifically on the mall side of things, across the state right now, this is, this is what we're seeing with redevelopments of, of. Abandoned or, or vacant malls or, or dilapidated malls. Um, you've got Grand Island, you've got Norfolk, obviously the mall here. Um, they're, they've just approved Tiffany EEA, or they're in the process of the EEA in the, in the mall in Lincoln to do some expansion on that. Uh, the, was it Crossroads? The Omaha Mall has got the biggest TIF number I've ever seen before. I mean, this is, this is the. This is, I mean, like, the, the renovation of a mall and the expansion of that site to, you know, bring out the utilities to do all the work that needs to be done. I mean, that is part of, in this case, what is unique about this, and you see it in every other. Mall across the state that they're trying to do. It, it's the same thing. It needs, it needs these incentives. It needs uh that assistance to, to make it work.
Thank you.
Justin, I think I have one more question. Sorry. And it has to do with the, the character of retail shopping. So when I was campaigning four years ago, I hardly encountered a person that didn't tell me that they wanted to see more retail shopping in North Platte. Particularly if that happened to be a lady, but, but it came from, from both genders. It, I have read in various magazines and things like that, that the nature of retail shopping has changed a little bit. Post-pandemic, and you kind of alluded to that. My question is, in all these developments, and feel free to chime in on this answer. Uh, it seems to me that in many cases, people are looking for um from what of an experience in their retail shopping. Rather than how I shop, it drives my wife crazy. I walk directly and grab the thing I want, walk directly to the cash register, buy it and leave. That's my approach to shopping generally. And um, but, but I am probably in the minority in, in my approach, and it seems that many other people want to have some sort of an experience. And I'm just curious, is that, is that what you're seeing? And again, both of you feel free to answer. And if so, could you give me a couple of examples of the experiences you've been able to create?
Yes, that, that would align with what we're seeing, and that's why I, there was such demand for that mixed-use building. When we had that availability for twenty-one thousand square feet there. Um, those retailers were. Waiting to get to that spot and fighting over what spot they could be in, but to get it sized right, so people can walk right down that sidewalk. You can go in, you can have your boutique kind of shopping experience. You go out, and you go to the next store. Um, easy parking gives you uh a little bit more of that experience of where you're at and where you're shopping. The problem that we saw with a lot of the malls, um, due to the inside, you know, hallways and corridors that were there. They, if they weren't filled, they, they didn't feel welcoming, and um, you know, you had a lot of empty spots because of the size of how big they were built. And things are changing, and that's where these stores are smaller than what they normally would have been four or five years ago. And they fit into that outside, um, you know, mixed-use building that we have there on the first floor. And Riddles is a great example of that. They wanted to be front and center. We said, are you sure? And yep, we wanna go there. Well, that's gonna be the last spot. You're gonna be the last one in the mall. We wanna be right there. We wanna make sure we can reach our clients right there. Our customer's there. We want a good experience. They can drive right up, park, and they know where to find us. So I, and I think we're seeing it here, and we're seeing it other places across the country, as Andrew mentioned, and. Um, that's what Lincoln's doing. That is what Grand Island's doing, but giving that experience, um, you know, to the customer, so they can easily access. The retailer that they want to.
Go ahead.
I'll make it quick. If you want any ideas, well, all I've been hearing is we need a grocery store. There you go.
We, we have it on the list. There has been conversations, and uh, yes, uh, it, I just. We're not gonna make any promises, but we are, we're trying, and um, we do appreciate the community feedback. Um, it's really helped, you know, with the retailers um that are here right now, and these retailers um do talk, so. I mean, you might even mention it to them as you are shopping, of, hey, tell your manager, tell so-and-so that it'd be great to have another so-and-so type store here, but.
Don't be the rumors, Justin.
Yeah, well, it's awful.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, we're at number six. Calling the question on number six, please.
Mayor, the uh passage of this ordinance requires a concurrence of a majority of all elected members of the city council, uh, so. Uh, pursuant to Nebraska revised statute sixteen four oh four, you are authorized to vote under this situation.
Okay, based on the fact that I heard from people that they want retail, I'm telling you, you better come up with something pretty cool, or I'll change my vote, so. Uh, I vote in favor. This one passes. There will be two more readings of this ordinance. Number six has passed. Number seven. Accept the lease proposal and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents regarding lease purchase financing with US Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, Inc. For one twenty-twenty-four John Deere six-twenty-four P-dash tier wheel loader for use by the sanitation department in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand.
I'm moved to accept the lease proposal and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents regarding lease purchase financing. With US Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, Inc. For one twenty-twenty-four John Deere six-twenty-four P-tier wheel loader for the sanitation department.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Vols. Just a quick comment. You might, might recall, this is the financing for the tractor that the council approved in the last meeting, just to be forsake of clarity, so. Other comments or questions? Go ahead, Ed.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I guess I'm looking at eight and nine together right now. What's presented here appears to say we're buying the same machine for a hundred thousand dollars more money. Obviously, there's gotta be something different, but it's not showing up in the paperwork that we have. And then, so I, I'd like to know what the difference is between these two machines, for one thing. Um, and I understand it's two different departments. Hopefully, we can get that worked out.
Yeah, I think we have some explanation right here, so.
See, we found out earlier.
Public Service Director, the difference is. The one for the sanitation department, we traded one old loader in on it. The one for the street department, we traded three pieces of equipment in on it.
Okay.
So that's where the reasons came from.
And then the other question that I have in, in, in this circumstance here is why are we borrowing money on one for five years and only three years on the other?
That would be Dawn.
We'll let Dawn take that one. Thanks, Steve.
Yes, and Ed, um, I work closely with Lane as far as budgeting goes. And he likes to try to maintain fairly constant debt service through the various departments and has actually planned out into the future with thoughts on needs moving forward. And so that would be the reason why we do have the different terms that we've requested on these two leases tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. Mr. Lucas.
Mr. Reeker, a comment that I'd make for somebody that works in, in finance a little bit and just a little bit in the municipal area. The one thing I've been impressed with the city in my time here, most cities try to stretch everything out as far as they can with the goal of that creates more cash flow to spend more money on other things we want. This city tends to choose to take the shortest lease they can afford, which is usually well short of the useful life of the equipment. And I think that's been a, a good practice of our city for a lot of, a lot of years, which has contributed to us, to us having a lower debt profile than a lot of cities do.
I would agree with that, Ty. Thank you.
Donna?
This question is probably for Ty. I don't know. So the interest rate, uh, why could we not get the same interest rate for the one for the street department as we did for sanitation? I mean, it's not much different, but it's a little bit more.
Sure, it's probably linked alone.
So there's no way we could put these two loans together?
Go ahead.
Just wondering.
So we're in a very weird environment because short-term rates are higher than long-term rates. And so leases by nature don't get prepaid very often. And so in today's world, the longer your leases, the lower the rate might be. Of course, your overall interest expense will be more because it's out there, it's out there longer. Most of the time in municipal finance, they try to keep the equipment separate. Because let's say one would get hit by hail or an accident. If you combine multiple pieces, it can be a little bit more complicated. And the, um, the other thing is that there's more efficiency in larger with municipal leasing generally. So by nature, the larger something is, the easier it is to cover your legal paperwork costs. And so a lot of times you'll see more aggressive bidding activity on larger issuances.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, calling the question on number seven. Number seven is passed. Number eight, accept the lease proposal and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Excuse me, regarding lease purchase financing for U S Bancorp Government. Excuse me. Government leasing and finance, Inc. For one 2024 John Deere 624 P tier wheel loader for use by the street department in the total amount of 155,035 dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the lease proposal and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents regarding lease purchase financing with U S Bancorp Government Leasing and Finance, Inc. For one 2024 John Deere 624 P tier wheel loader for the street department.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Garrick. Any discussion? This is highly similar to the last one. Calling the question on number eight, please. Number eight is passed. Number nine, approve the resolution providing for the designation of Nebraska Land Bank as a warrant lender, authorizing the execution and delivery of a warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
Guess what?
I'm going to guess you're going to recuse yourself on this one.
I asked to recuse myself from both this item and the following item.
Okay, let the record show, Councilman Lucas will accuse himself from item number nine and item number 10.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution providing for the designation of Nebraska Land Bank as a warrant lender, authorizing the execution and delivery of a warrant purchase agreement with such designated warrant lender and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Garrick. Any discussion on item number nine? Ed?
Obviously I don't understand this. Why are we approving Nebraska Land Bank to be a warrant lender? When a couple more items down the way, we're going to be authorizing payment of warrants that have been issued to Nebraska Land Bank?
Dawn? Oh, finance guru.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilman Reeker, that is part of the process. So when, when we do solicit bids, when we have warrants to issue, um, the banks submit those based upon the bids received, council will then approve, um, a warrant purchase agreement be entered into with that particular bank, which carries a term of one year. And so these warrants, any warrant gets, that get issued for those next 12 months use the same maturity date. So as we approach the end of a warrant term, the term of the individual warrants will decrease. And upon the maturity, then we, um, will reissue if we're not to a point of redeeming or applying for permanent financing at that time.
Okay, thank you. Knew there had to be some logical reason.
We try to stay in the world of logic. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, calling the question on number nine, please. Number nine is passed. Number 10. Councilman Lucas, you're accusing yourself from number 10 as well. Okay.
Thank you.
Approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of one warrant to Myers Construction, Inc. in the amount of 497,849 dollars and 51 cents. One warrant to Steel's Roofing and Construction in the amount of 23,688 dollars and 57 cents. One warrant to Midlands Contracting, Inc. in the amount of 399,595 dollars and 38 cents. And seven warrants to Nebraska Land Bank totaling 4,307,922 dollars and 51 cents to pay approved claims and referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number 3874 relating to warrant financing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution, uh, approved warrant issue, insure, issuance resolution, sorry. I'm sorry. I did that wrong.
Start over, Ed.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of 10 warrants as presented in the materials.
Second. Thank you.
Sorry.
It's all right. We all have our moments. There's no question.
That was more than one.
Okay. Any discussion? I have number 10.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reeker.
So this Myers construction of nearly $500,000, is that for the water line on Ninth Street?
Brent? Yes, that's correct. He's nodding.
Okay, thank you. Um, tell me if this question's out of line, but I'm going to ask it. Where are we with the concrete part of that project?
Brent, do we have any idea when they're starting on concrete? Brent, Brent, Brent. You don't get away that easy.
The plan is we're going to bid it this fall. We're going to try to connect probably Golden Road and that to be bid at the same time.
To, to bid this fall or to start this fall?
Well, it depends on the contractor if they can start this fall. Ideally, yes. If they can start, that would be the goal.
Weren't we talking about doing it sooner than this?
Yeah, they haven't got out of the way with the water main yet. Now they bowed our, their past Sherman. They just got past Sherman last week. So they didn't get out of the way yet.
So they kind of delaying that part of it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, a little bit. They had groundwater, high groundwater slowed down a little bit, but they're, they're doing okay overall schedule wise. So they're still planning on being done with Ninth Street this year, so.
Well, I must say that, uh, from what I've seen, they, they cleaned up behind themselves very well.
Good.
How's your water pressure, Ed?
It's good.
Good?
I'll leave it at that, man.
We probably better go on for it. Any other discussion? I have number 10. Seeing none, calling the question. Excuse me, on item number 10. Item number 10 is passed. Item number 11, approve the claims.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the claims.
Second. Motion by Reeker, second by Flanders. Any discussion? I have number 11. Seeing none, calling the question. I have number 11, please. Item number 11 is passed. Getting ready for item number 12.
Mr. Mayor, I move to enter into closed session for the sole purpose of discussing contract negotiations in order to protect the public's interest.
Okay, motion to executive session. Have a second?
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Vols. Executive session, calling the question on executive session. Council is now in executive session. Thank you for all for waiting. Item number 12, approve the bid and authorize the mayor to sign contract documents with Sampson Construction, Inc. for recreation center addition and renovation.
I move to approve the bid and authorize the mayor to sign contract documents with Sampson Construction, Inc. for recreation center addition and renovation.
Second.
Motion by Garrick, second by Vols. Any discussion on item number 12? We have a Sampson representative here, we can grill him if we need to. No questions? Oh, that's right, we'll just, we'll just do this, so. Okay. If no one has any questions or comments, don't pick up your little white things, they're not going to work right now, so. Okay, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Attorney, would you yell the names, please?
Nisley.
Aye.
Tryon.
Aye.
Vols.
Aye.